Happy to be here.
You think? Well, look, somebody is. Best crowd we've had in attendance, right, Ms. Kreitz? All right. All right, good evening and welcome to our special call, January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Tuscaloosa City Planning and Zoning Commission. This time I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director of Urban Development; Zach Pons, Director of Planning; Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who was appointed by the City Council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation, beginning with Mr. Smith.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Environmental Services.
Eddie Pugh, retired.
Tim Harrison, General Counsel.
Bill Wright, Business Owner.
There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you did not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda. Procedures: The commission will take up items on the order of the agenda. The commission will receive a presentation from staff regarding minor changes and updates to the proposed zoning map that they have identified between the creation and present day. The commission will vote to accept or reject these changes for final recommendation to the City Council for July of this year. This is not the final vote on these items. The final vote will happen in July of two thousand and twenty-four. After the staff presentation, the floor will be open for public comment. Those who commented online will be taken up first, followed by others in attendance. Individuals wishing to express support or opposition will be given three minutes to speak. All of the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant specified time extension to any individual. Public comment will be received, the floor closed to public comment, and the commission will open discussion among themselves, preserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any proposed changes for final consideration at the review meetings that will take place this year. These proceedings are via recorded and broadcast live. All public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. Regarding zoning text amendments, Section one-one dash five-two dash seven-six of the Code of Alabama states, "The legislative body of such municipality shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and the boundaries of such district shall be determined, established, and enforced from the time to time amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinance as may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective provisions of this article." The Planning and Zoning Commission service is a recommending body to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendments will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the City Council adopts the zoning text and zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. At this time, I would ask do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts for any of the topics on the agenda for discussion this evening? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, with that, we will begin. Kreitz.
Well, good evening, Commission. There is nothing like changing the colors on a map that really gets folks here, right? I'm excited. I'm thrilled to have a whole bunch of folks here behind us, whether they be casual observers or folks who want to talk about a specific property. This is the process I've been looking forward to. I get a little chill bump thinking about it. So, let's talk about our meeting expectations and dive in. Of course, if you're a member of our Steering Committee, I know that's an antiquated term, but just remember, if you remember the Steering Committee and you come to speak at the podium, just note your role in that process as a part of the framework creation. Our Planning and Zoning Commission members, of course, you've had a chance to review the draft code articles, the proposed map amendments in advance of the meeting. Just refrain from arguing with public commenters. Listen, ask questions if you don't understand any clarification. Be respectful and desire an expedited proceeding. For everyone, of course, these meetings are starting at five P.M. and ending at seven P.M. If we don't finish before that, if we don't finish a topic, conversely, we will roll it into the next scheduled meeting. We'll utilize a three-minute timer for all parties, planning commission staff and public. And, Commission, you are the only ones who are able to grant additional time to someone if they need it. And staff is managing the flow of the meeting for efficiency. And you'll see how that's working this evening when it comes to folks who commented on the map in advance versus folks who may have come this evening and didn't. Everyone will still get a chance in the public comments portion, but the folks who commented in advance will go first, followed by those who did not. So, let's hop into this evening's discussion. To talk about the area north of the river, we also need to make some quick clarifications because the cool part about this process is we haven't adopted a formal zoning text yet because we knew that as people were looking at individual pieces of property and saying, "All right, they are proposing that this be zoned SFR-two. And what does that mean for my property?" Oh, gosh, it looks like something has changed, that I may not be able to do what I can today. Hey, Ashley, Zach, was that the intention? No, it wasn't the intention, let's fix that. We knew there were going to be things like that, and especially when it came to density. And so, there are four districts of the, four of the residential districts to talk about this evening that we need. If, Commission, if you agree with what we propose as staffer changes, then collectively, we will make sure that it goes online to say, "Moving forward, remember that now we are thinking about this density for this district." And so, when you see it on a map, you will know that it's not what you see in the text itself. There will be some changes that happen as we go through this. And we are all, I think this is all of our first zoning ordinance and zoning map rewrites, right? So, comprehensively, we're trying not to overly complicate things and use common sense. So, let's talk a little bit about SFR-four, MR-one, MR-two, and our multifamily districts. The original intent, of course, of SFR-four was for small and medium lots, single-family detached homes, duplexes, limited-scale townhouses. It was actually intended, and remains so, to give property today that zoned already one and two a natural home, though we also know that SFR-four will apply to potentially some things today zoned R-three just because of lot sizes. So, these are not across-the-board rezonings, and we've been preaching that for quite some time. We want to reduce the number of nonconformities in West Tuscaloosa residential neighbors and provide land for a new small lot residential development. And so, of course, this was the original single-family residential table. And based on the stakeholder comments, and this was from a meeting quite a while back, that the lot area minimums would need testing, that your front setbacks of fifteen feet won't work for a front-entry garage, and then the setbacks of ten feet are too large, they should be reduced down to five. And so, what you see in what was amended is a direct reflection of that. Those side setbacks got reduced to five, and Note three down here talks about street facing garages are to be set back at least twenty feet from the front lot line. So, through our testing process, what we found was that townhouse densities need to be increased to what today would be the current standard of fifteen dwelling units per acre. And that would be consistent with what you see today in your RD-one and two zoning. And in addition, triplexes and quadplexes should be added to the list of permitted uses limited to a current standard of fifteen dwelling units per acre as well. Any questions on that one?
Current language is six.
Current language is six. Yeah. Townhouses are limited to your lot area, there's no lot area minimum for a townhouse. You just have to meet the setbacks.
So, so under this, you'll be able to put fifteen on an acre?
On an acre.
But that may or may not mean the design, the design works. I mean, we had one. I mean, I spoke at length with someone here in the audience about one that we spent some time on. I think they had twelve, but there was problems with, there was some ingress egress problems. There wasn't a great distance between the parking spaces and the actual structure. If you, if the car pulled up to the sidewalk, the front of the car would be over the sidewalk. Whereas it was, just because you have an acre doesn't mean fifteen will work.
Right, exactly. And it's just like today where, you know, if you've got half an acre, you get, math is hard, seven? Seven, because you can't have half a townhouse. So, you end up with seven on that acre.
I think in one of our cases, one of the issues was, it was the ingress egress, so it really didn't have that much to do with the acre, but if you had delivery vehicles go in there, they're going to have to pull in, and they're going to have to back out on a busy street. So, if you go to a certain number like that, are you saying that that's the God-given right? Kind of by golly, and so, would that be pushing us into a situation where we would have to accept fifteen in spite of any other circumstances?
No, not at all, just like today. If anyone, you know, you may have, you may have your half-acre lot that says you can only do seven dwelling units because that's your maximum density, is seven dwelling units per acre. But then you also have just some intrinsic needs and things. And I think you especially see it within the university area today, where every inch matters. And on every development, every inch matters in terms of the number of bedrooms and what you can fit on that site. But based on how you park it and the dumpster needs potentially, they may only be able to fit six. But that exists today.
Okay, I just.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just, we recognize a need to revert the density to what exists today, but also knowing that, you know, nothing will change in that.
And all townhomes are not equal.
Exactly.
You have summer water.
Yes, yeah, so true. Anything else on this one? All right, let's talk about MR-one. So, our MR-one district is the renaming of the R-four district today, for the most part. So, anything R-four, you would think, or you could think, could become MR-one. But again, like anything, there are certain areas, certain situations where something else may be more appropriate. MR-one was there for a mix of single-family detached, two-family, three-family dwellings, townhouses, small-scale multifamily developments. And so, the purpose statement for that says a maximum of eight dwelling units per acre. We've already made some changes when it came to the townhouse multifamily section. We did bump that already to fifteen dwelling units per acre in MR-one. Our stakeholder involvement did identify, we just needed to test it. So far, in MR-one, that is, it's positive because it is what exists today. But what we did notice was that your single-family detached dwellings need to have a minimum lot width of fifty feet instead of sixty-five. We didn't have a natural step-down from today, you have, your R-one lots today are eighty-five feet in width. R-two are seventy-five feet in width. R-three is sixty-five feet in width. And then, all of a sudden, we dropped down to forty-five, and we didn't have a good mid-range lot width number. And MR-one was a really perfect, a perfect fit for that as well, especially for properties zoned R-four today. And even potentially some R-three property that has always been nonconforming because they are fifty-by-one-fifties.
Ashley, in these cases, just for the public's information, those who are in the audience are watching, why don't you give an example of an MR-one, MR., just so people understand what you're talking about? Like, they hear the MR-one, but we know it's probably like towns or something like that. Give us, give an example of what we're talking about, please.
You mean an area of town?
Like an area of town that people can kind of visually see in the.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, okay. Nothing like flying by the seat of your pants for a second, guys.
Curveball.
I know, curveball tonight. So, your SFR-four, you will see probably a lot of in Alberta. Those Alberta lots, the things around Forest Lake, those are the size lots that you'll see SFR-four on. For your MR-ones, you'll end up seeing quite a bit of it in West Tuscaloosa. And also, just some areas where a fifty-by-one-fifty lot exists. We, gosh, we loved to plat fifty-by-one-fifties, and they have never fit into any zoning category that we've ever had in the city of Tuscaloosa.
That goes back to, what, nineteen seventy-two?
Oh, no, I mean, the fifty-by-one-fifties, those are your original, your original lots.
Original passed down, I mean, in the thirties and forties.
Yes, one hundred percent. And that, it's a brown color on the maps today. And so, when we get into MR-two, your MR-two is the same situation. You know, it talks about simplifying renaming RA-one and two, and I think that is appropriate. In a lot of respects, we had some cool zoning that did come about as a result of Tuscaloosa forward, even as issued as it was. There were some good things that came out of it. And so, your RA-one and two were residential attached products, apartment houses and things like that. So, you'll likely see some MR-two that happens even north of the river, but especially in Alberta and the Forest Lake area. And so, what we propose, what needs to happen in MR-two, y'all identified building material standards, and so, we brought that back, those exist today. Our permitted use table, and we are so thankful to the folks behind us who have been catching things also. And multifamily right now is not in the permitted use table for MR-two, even though the purpose statement says small multifamily homes, so we need to fix that. And then, we also need to fix the density. The, what we have found is that twelve dwelling units an acre is not compatible with our current RA-one and two standards, if that exists, to change things across the board. So, what would be better happening in this area is if you remove the density maximums, because there are none today. We control density in this area based on height and parking. And so, if we put those two things in place, and like today, where you have minimum ceiling heights of nine feet for buildings in these zoning districts, we put in a minimum ceiling height of nine feet and just say, "No underground parking allowed," you're able to use these properties, and you don't create nonconformities for some things that we can see ourselves applying this to in the future. And then, finally, our sweet friend, multifamily residential. Of course, RMF-one, RMF-two get lumped into this one. There's some RM-three and four property today that doesn't have development on it, but could be put into this category. You look at twenty-two dwelling units an acre for this, and what we have found through testing and for our existing multifamily developments, we may, we will end up creating nonconformities because our current ordinance today, and you see it in italics, it says that multifamily structures exceeding a ratio of twenty-two dwelling units an acre are permitted on land having ready access to a street classified as a collector or arterial. It's not limiting it, like this proposal does, to a set of twenty-two. It just says, "If you go above twenty-two, you better have access to a collector or an arterial." We need to not create that many nonconforming multifamily properties. We will find ourselves in a raft of trouble. And so, we propose reverting to our current language, but also saying, "You're not sticking your parking underground."
Are you saying that if, say it was hit by a tornado and they couldn't build back, that would create a wrath of?
You'd have a wrath of issues, yeah. And it's even, it's projects and properties that we are all quite fond of, that we like, that we have bragged on, that will run into many issues. If, if this, if we take a hard line that says twenty-two dwelling units per acre for multifamily, period.
It would be seen as a taking, perhaps.
I'm not going to say that because I'm not the attorney, Jimbo says no. But it would create.
He always says.
He always says no, I know, I'm so glad Jimbo's back with us. But what it would do is, it would just cause a lot of issues for us that I don't know that we necessarily need to have. So, those are the things. So, if we agree with those changes moving forward, I think it puts us all on a level playing field, and we'll make sure that this, a summary of, hey, moving forward, think about it this way, gets added in, and we just keep marching. I see some north-south.
So, underground parking, I can't remember that conversation. Why wouldn't we want underground parking?
Because it is the grand, it's the grand story of the student housing situation that happened for us, where we never, in our wildest dreams, thought that it would be lucrative for people to start digging down to put parking. And so, where in the university area, you know, you had things like Westgate that came in at what I want to say is one-eighty-five an acre. And then, you had the hub that said, "Bet," and they built underground, and they ended up at four-hundred-and-eighty per acre. By, this zoning is not, it's not intended for people to dig underground for your multifamily. There's a time and a place for it, but I don't know that we'd want to see this happening out on Helen Keller.
So, it created unexpected density in areas.
It would create a lot of density, that's a great way of putting it.
No, there's a project down at the end of University Boulevard, and I think because of the slope of the lot, they cut into it, and there is probably some that would be considered perhaps, it's Charlie, Little Charlie, Charlie's Place.
Well, that's good.
You know, down there across, you know where I'm talking about, down by the Old Tavern. So, he cuts into the bank, and so, some of that might have been considered, you know, underground, but it quickly gets into kind of a deck situation. And so, but if you take the attitude, there's nothing can be on the ground, there may be some spots that would have been below grade, but I'm just saying that, you know, there may be some properties where, because the land, because we're talking about north of the river, is that the focus tonight?
The focus tonight is mainly.
No, citywide.
This would apply citywide.
These would be things that would be applied citywide, and as we look, because the next meeting will be on West Tuscaloosa. So, but no, that's an excellent point, Mr. Rumsey, and I think, I think there's a way for us to phrase it especially because this is property also, this isn't for multifamily. This would be in your downtown area, where you might want your structured parking built in with a development like twenty-seven-hundred Capital Park.
You've got a couple of projects on the books right now that are talking to you in downtown that would have underground parking.
Yeah, and those properties, though, are not going to be zoned multifamily. They would be zoned downtown. So, this isn't, it's an excellent point to raise because we'll make sure that that gets addressed and isn't detrimental.
Would this preclude the university, on the university?
Yes, because the multifamily MFR-U is your multifamily residential.
So, this would affect?
This would.
Projects on UA campus if they wanted to do?
This would not, no. Those would be zoned MFR-U. This would be things, and since we're in the oh-six area, this is things like, I just dropped, the Reserve that would be zoned multifamily.
Because, because if you're not hitting your density max, max, I mean, it's a design thing. They're two different things. I hear what you're saying. So, just because somebody can figure out a way to dig, you may not want a thousand units on an acre. But if it's, maybe density isn't their thing, it's not, it's not a density issue. You bring up Capital Park, I think they only have like two-hundred beds there, and it's like four acres, you know, or something, I may be mis, I'm not sure, but it's not, they didn't load it up then. They also have bottom floor mixed use, but I don't know, that one just comes to mind because as you get north of the river, as expensive as the land is, there's probably going to be more people that start digging over there. I mean, we haven't seen it yet because, I guess, I guess as the McCrae Street Road Extension comes along, and we start plating lots, and we have these commercial pot areas, right? We'll start seeing people feeling antsy about, like you said, getting as much as they can.
Yeah, I agree.
So, Ashley, are you saying you're going to craft some language that kind of, we need to come up with some language that?
I think, Ashley, the more we've talked through this as a group, where multifamily residential is applied, if we just say, "You're not doing underground parking on what is owned multifamily residential," we don't impact projects in downtown, we don't impact projects that have been well-done with a stacked apartment building. But, you know, I don't, I don't know that we'd want to see on the edges of town, let's say, you know, something happens down Highway sixty-nine south, a multifamily project comes down, and they want to rebuild it, and they've got deep pockets, and they want a cram density in there. I don't think we necessarily want to see that, that wasn't what came out of framework. And so, just them building back with the individual buildings with onsite and at-grade parking, we can just make sure it says, "We're not doing underground parking in multifamily."
You know, this, this is.
This is a debate worth having because even though they got density, that some of them got density we may not have agreed with, or created issues on our infrastructure. They hid the cars. I mean, they hid them, and you drive through some of these projects, and you don't see the cars because they, because they, they cut into the bank, and because they got maybe one level that may be semi-subterranean, and I like the fact we're not seeing the cars.
Yeah, and we could put in that it's, you know, the average grade of the lot or something along those lines. Let us, let us take a look at it.
Because you, I guess that's what I was getting to, you're going to, you could have a lot where you could have it leveled in the front, and it drops off significantly in the back.
And it creates an opportunity, really to make a better project.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, we have houses with garages like that.
Right.
Single-family dwellings, yeah.
So, when.
That really aren't underground, well, they are, but they're open in the back, yeah.
The grade in the, in the land, the slope of the land and all that may, may impact that.
A lot of times, we do stuff like that, I mean, we do it today, that's how we measure height, it's from the average grade of the property anyway, so.
So, if we were playing football here, this would be a targeting foul.
Yeah, what?
Targeting foul. We're targeting it, and I, the last time that we changed this, our zoning, was back in, when they had leather football helmets, right?
Yeah.
I won't, I mean, and this is going to be, hopefully, we're not going to change it anytime soon.
Right.
I, I'm concerned about things like this, targeting specific developments that might potentially work in a certain setting down the road if the market changes, if conditions change. I'm very concerned about targeting specific-type projects because we don't like them.
Yeah.
We don't like them today. I think in the future, we need to have some flexibility, and this, to me, this is one that limits some flexibility for us to allow a specific project that is market-driven, that effectively enhances people and the quality of life in the city of Tuscaloosa. We can go on. I'm really concerned about focused, focused changes, and to me, this is one of them.
Okay.
You know, specifically, the parking, the underground parking, it's expensive to do it. Now, I also realize there was some pushback on that, on those lift-type things or whatever, because that was kind of a first time, it was almost seen like a, I'm not going to say sham, it was like, no one had seen that before, and I don't think, I don't think we've heard any complaints about it.
We, the complaints have just stopped because people aren't using them in that building, so.
It's more of a loophole than a sham, I think, but yeah, I guess that's what we're trying to.
So, I think.
We don't want to close a loophole that prevents more creative thought that we would encourage.
Our, our thought process with the multifamily change was merely that if you're zoned RMF-one or two today, you can't go underground with your parking in the first place. And fixing the density was, it's a huge, that's a huge win for that for sure, and I hope that we continue forward with that. When it comes to the no-underground parking piece, let's, let's think for another second.
I would like to take another look at that and see if there's another mechanism by which you can get to the means justifying the ends.
Yeah, that's totally.
So, I mean, in density, me, these projects were driven by cost and density, land cost and density, and that's why they were allowed to put the, I mean, they put enough density on them so they could afford to put it underground.
Yeah.
And maybe you look at another.
Totally.
And we're still living in a world where everybody's got an automobile. I mean, but I don't know what it'll look like in twenty years. You know, they say you'll call a car and they'll pick you up, you know, and they'll take you where you want to go, and, you know, we may, we may see a time, and, you know, this parking thing, this one-to-one bed is not. we may, we may see a time, and, you know, this parking thing that's one-to-one for bed is not, I guess.
I would love that.
Well, Uber's already doing it. I mean, there's students that are coming here now, when, when, they used to come all with a car, and we're starting to see some that are not bringing cars.
Not many.
Well, I-
So-
My office is on campus, and I rent to about 2,000 students, and I can tell you exactly that there's, there's probably been a 5, 10% decrease.
Let's talk really quickly about, let me just, let's just keep throwing stuff at y'all and see where you go with it. One thing that has come up through testing were a couple of items for our general commercial and neighborhood commercial districts. And so, of course, general commercial are things that, the corridor commercial, character type, and the future land use character map, it's supposed to take the place of that, so a lot of things that you see zoned BN today, and I had a conversation with, with someone who's got property in this area, that it may be that something's zoned BN today, because BN got so convoluted from, I think, its original 1972 intent, because there needed to be something between BGO and BN that just didn't exist. BNS was there, but no one used it. And so, there may be some things where, based on the setting, the topography, something, a neighborhood commercial may be more appropriate than a general commercial. But for the long and short of it, neighborhood commercial was there to build on that BNS intent statement. And we've heard from a few folks, and I want to throw this idea at you, because it's not just individuals that we've tested with, but it's, it's some issues with developments that have happened recently, where, and commercial developments that have been built recently, and people have said, "How could they build it this way? Why does it have metal siding? Why does it look this way?" And I can see both sides of this conversation. And so, you may, we know for new development and substantial redevelopment, it just gets built into the overall cost. And so, I, it wouldn't be anything like you see in other jurisdictions, where they make you meet it if you're just changing out a shingle on the roof. But the discussion about material standards in your commercial districts has come up. Because remember, GC and NC will go not only in District 3, but it will go into West Tuscaloosa, into areas on 69 South and East Tuscaloosa. And so, we need to discuss it, we need to figure out where, where we want to be on it, if anything, because we don't need to separate out and make general commercial 1 and 2, where one doesn't have material standards and another one does, because that's an unnecessary division. If it's good enough for one part of the city, it should be good enough for another. So, I bring that idea up there to you, lobbing a grenade.
I'm 100% in favor of it. I mean, again, it, it's the, it, it goes back, we've, I've been a proponent of it in Northport, and metal building panels, you can't have metal building panels in Southport. I mean, there's a couple of projects that built in '06 where you've got raw metal building panels facing, facing the road, you've got corrugated metal building panels facing the road. Those are the things that, that you have, you have a nice development re- adjacent to it, and then you've got this thing built. So yeah, I'm 100%. And, you know, I caution, again, I caution us, we need to look at this, probably the specific ones that we do, and be careful of changes in technology and tastes in the future. For instance, a metal building panel, now they make metal building panels that resemble brick, or they make metal building panels that resemble wood.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think you could, there needs to be some work in that to really don't box us in,
Allow the technology to keep up.
Or we can allow new technology to, yeah.
And the way that that portion has, has read for, since the dawn of time, and we put it in there back after the tornado, is that it does allow for flexibility for the zoning officer to see this new brick, metal brick product that looks exactly like brick and go, "Okay, yeah, all right, I get it, let's, let's use it." And so, I agree with you, and we're carrying that process forward too, because I don't need something to get stuck in stone. No pun intended, since we're talking material, but I don't need something to, I'm glad you laughed, Ms. Hornsby. Someone needed to at that bad pun, but, to get stuck and then us not update a zoning ordinance for another 50 years.
Well, I, we've talked about it also, that given the staff flexibility to make some, some changes as running changes instead of having to go for us, or-
Also something to keep in mind, not only do we keep up with the technology and material changes, but also the maintenance impact that it has also some, so we need to make sure that, if we're going to approve that, because you can approve something that's new, but if it's not-
If it's not maintainable.
Maintainable, then you're kind of back at square one with that, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure at one point in time, that EPIS was, "Man, it was the best thing in the world." It was going to fix all of our problems.
Trust me.
And then, it just falls apart.
And I was one, a component for that until, until that.
Until that started happening. I agree completely. All right, so let's take a look at that. Anything else on the zoning map? So aside from the underground parking, are we all okay with the staff-proposed changes? Heads are going north-south, we're moving aside from underground parking. So we'll have that summary list available, and we'll keep on marching. All right, guys, let's get into the colors. So, of course, we are in that map draft update process. I think it is prudent to talk really quickly, very briefly, about the future land use character map and how we are creating the draft zoning map. So we all remember this beautiful, beautiful map that was created through the Framework Comprehensive Plan Process, our future land use character map. We had our categories that we got to take a look at and that we have used now to help create our draft zoning map. That map was created as a result of input from over 40 groups. You see the steering committee meetings, the number of individuals who showed up at Forum on the Future, our open house, the comment cards we collected, the map comments, the text comments, and then let's not even get into the eight meetings that we held to adopt Sweet Sweet Framework. And so, that had a lot of input going into this process, and we're so very thankful for it. And we're thankful for the work of that steering committee, who represented the community in the process, and helped guide us at all those really crucial steps, getting into the community, acting as our spokespeople. You see the folks who were there as members of our steering committee. It's good to remember who was a part of it. And again, remember also that the future land use and character map is not a mandate, we are using it as a policy guide. And multiple zoning districts could be a part of that. The draft zoning map is being created by staff. I know I mentioned it last meeting, we had the luxury as staff of getting to sit back while the future land use draft was being created by the steering committee through work with our consulting team. We, we are making it, and we are having a great time with it, but we are also humans, and so we are glad for the folks who have taken a look at property and said, "Hey, I think you got that one wrong." Because we are not so bold as to say, "Nah, I'm always right, y'all know me well enough, you know, I'll, I'll eat crow if I need to, and it's okay, I'd rather this be right." So we're using the framework, future land use character map, the existing zoning map, our current land uses, as well as our professional judgment and expertise. We're sticking that map on the website ahead of the meeting, usually about the month, three weeks and a few days beforehand, is what we've kind of boiled down to, because I want to wrap this meeting up, put the next meeting map online, and let's get off to the races. We're doing a section at a time. And then we are using our special-called meetings. So these are our new zoning districts and the new colors, and I want, I want to call attention to a couple of things. We are using traditional zoning colors. So I know everyone is so used to blue, BN, commercial, no longer. Blue is traditionally institutional uses. Our industrial districts, I know today are a smattering of red and pink and some dark oddball color. Purple is the traditional color for industrial. Residential varies in yellow, oranges, and then your commercial districts are a variety of red. And then, of course, you've got green for open space. So, that, I think there were a couple of comments on the map where I think a couple of folks may have gotten a little confused, because they saw pink and they thought it was industrial, but really, it's correctly zoned. So, I am going to turn this over to Mr. Pons, because he is the planning director after all, and let him walk through the map with y'all.
Thank you. I think she just doesn't want to read all these into the record, and that's why I'm up here. So we're talking about the lakes area. So as you can see here, you know, north of the Black Warrior River includes all the, the lake area. It just happens to include all of Council District 3, as well as part of District 1, the airport area. So we made some, you know, looking at it ourselves and seeing some, some things, as well as talking with some people beforehand, before the meetings, we've just made some changes that clearly were easy changes to make. So, you can see here the airport area, that we'll start off with first. You know, this is the future land use character map colors. This is the existing zoning districts, so what we have today. And then this is what it's going to look like in the future. So, I don't know about y'all, but I think this looks a lot better. More cohesive. So, let's just get into, I think there was only one change that we really made here that was identified by one of our city staff that works at the airport. We identified, I think it's Rob, yeah, Robert Cardinal Park as a park. They said that, you know, within their, their airport master plan, there's some opportunity to use it as airport-type use. So we changed that to IP, which was an easy change. And then we can now move into the North Tuscaloosa area. So again, here is your framework, future land use character map, and then the zoning district for kind of the northern portion of this area as it exists today versus what it's going to look like in the future. So you can see here what exists today, all of our lakes, you know, the city of Tuscaloosa obviously owns our lake. We own Lake, Lake Nickel, we own Lake Harris or Harris Lake, and we've identified that all as, as R1 today, so what a single-family home goes on, for the most part. So clearly, that's not appropriate. We've, I, we've created an open space district through this process.
Much easier to see.
Well, much easier to see, to identify where it ends and where it begins. The lake commercial district, so we have some like lake-specific districts as well in this area. And then you can see the kind of lower portion of, of that. So you've got the, or the existing zoning, and then the proposed zoning. So you can see there's a very clear delineation between, you know, what's riverfront and what's not. A lot of open space that you can see there, some schools that are really going to kind of pop, and should be identified in, in the way that we're identifying in the future. So going into that, Tuscaloosa Academy, we identified it in our first draft as SFR1. Clearly, that's a private school, so institutional, semi-public, is what we're going to just make that quick change. And again, first draft is what we've posted online. So we haven't changed anything outside of closed doors, except for these kind of items that we're sharing with y'all today. So what's posted online is what we're going through tonight, I just want to be clear with that. So that's what that first draft piece is. So Academy Drive area, there were some PUD, some PUDs that we identified that as we actually did some digging in our hard copies of our files, we realized those actually weren't developed as planned developments. So, GPD in the future is general develop, or GPD is what it should be, general plan development. And so, that's going to kind of take over what PUDs are today. So everything that exists as a PUD today, or was built as a PUD today, thinks towns of, towns of North River. In this, it's Fox Run right there, so the Academy Drive area, you can see Fox Run, that's, that was developed as a PUD, so it's going to be zoned PD, GPD, in the future. River Chase subdivision, so this was another one that we identified as a, it was a PUD. Come to, you know, digging our files, it actually isn't, was not developed as a PUD, and so we made that change as well.
Is that in the perforated box area?
Yes, yeah. So that's, the, the blue you see there is North Ridge and Verner Elementary School. So it's that area behind that. And then the eastern northern bypass area, this was really just kind of cleaning it up. You can see that there were some zoning areas that were missing, and so we just extended those down riverfront and neighborhood commercial. And then the Rice Mine Road northeast area, so this was one of the items that was identified to us through the stakeholder engagement, through comments, and we made that change. The neighborhood commercial piece is actually not part of, this is High Grove area. So High Grove is that GPD on the left, and that's not part of that development. And so we changed that to north, to neighborhood commercial. And so now, we will move into the map. The comments that we have collected through our online portal, which again, framework.tuscaloosan.com, we're posting it a month before each meeting, you know, give or take, to provide these comments, so that we can go through them together, we can look at exactly what they're saying, and discuss them. And it gives us the opportunity to reach out as staff when we get comments, just to kind of talk through them, so we can just make those easy changes that need to be made. So we will, I guess, just kind of-
Well, and as a great example, so we'll, we'll hit every single comment that we see in the list, which is a process you've seen us do before, we want to read them into the record. And so, for example, you know, we'll click into them. This comment came to us from Jeff Powell, who said Cardinal Park is not an officially designated park. This parcel is proposed and available for future airport development. And it is, it's very accurate, it's not listed in our city parks. So that is, Mr. Pons showed that change that we've already proposed as staff. So, I think we're going to awkwardly go back and forth between these slides, maybe. So, the first, hold on, sorry for the clunkiness. This, it's like riding a bicycle or snow skiing, you've got to remember the flow of these meetings for a second.
Yeah, so when we did the future land use character map, this is the process that we did, and it seemed to work really well, so.
So we got a comment from Jimmy Duncan, and these slides will coincide with that. Zach, I'll find that one for you.
It was my comment that I put in there for him. Yeah, so you can see this property here, they, I'll just read it into the record, from Jimmy Duncan. This should be LMF to match the northern property with the same owner, so that kind of olive-green color is the same owner, and there could be some future plans to kind of build those simultaneously. And so that was the comment that was made, and I think we're-
What was it?
Oh, it's vacant land today. Oh, what was it before? That is, what is that? That's Lake Residential. So-
Oh, okay, so it needs to be then.
Yeah.
I think that, I think we have to have the context of the deal that was made at the time. I mean, on that piece of property, do you have the records of how that came about? You ought to dig them up.
All right, so.
So Commissioner, I think what we're going to ask you to do on each of these comments is say, "Yes, we're interested in entertaining this change," or "No, we're not," or "Poten- potentially there is more research that needs to be done." And we will note it separately on the map, so we know what the consensus was.
So what are y'all's thoughts on this property? Do y'all agree with the proposed change? Do y'all want to kind of discuss it a little bit further, ask some questions?
I get a lot of background on the property, and not seeing a site, a site, you know, map of it, or besides this, it's kind of like, I hate to make a decision on-
That's police boat landing, right?
What'd you say, sir?
Isn't that the police boat landing?
That's, the boat landing down below it, that is, that, I guess it's where that old roadbed used to go.
That is, I guess it's where that old road bed used to be.
So you've got the cemetery off to the west, and it's this little triangle, triangle piece. I always call it the Watermelon Road cap that leads off to the boat landing.
That old road beds, when Rice Mine, they made that loop around Watermelon Road, they just bypassed it right to turn. Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to go to adjacent property.
I don't see it being developed residential.
Little house put in.
Yeah, right in that little triangle there. Makes sense to me.
You're proposing, you're proposing, you're proposing what?
So collectively, we agree with the recommendation, what you want to say.
Yes, I believe so, because just like we did with the future lane use character map, none of what happens today is the be-all, end-all. You are not, you're basically saying, as we move forward to the July wrap-up meetings, this is what we expect to see on the overall maps as we lead up to that.
So we'll do a voice vote on that, just say aye or nay, whatever. Okay with that, Jimbo? So, so with this request per the, I would say not petitioner, but Mr. Duncan, all those in favor, his recommendation, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right.
Dang it, I have to put a hold on that one. Sorry, Zach, hold on.
You're good.
Got it. All right.
All right, one down. So this, these are obviously comments from Mr. Quarter and Mr. Henry regarding Watermelon Road.
Nice, real quick question though on these comments. I mean, we're just getting the written comments that were made several days ago probably. Now, these people are in the audience, and they might want to revise or...
They will have, yeah, folks will have an opportunity, and they should, I think, because Mr. Quarter, Mr. Henry are both here this evening, and so Mr. Pons can read it into the record, and you can call them up to the podium.
I won't do that, but I would like to just say maybe if he reads in the record, if they're in agreement with it, then they should have to say anything beyond that. But they want to make a comment, then make the comment.
Absolutely.
Or if we have questions.
Yeah, I mean, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, so this one is submitted by Richard Henry. Comment, would make a good multifamily site once sewer is expanded. And then this one is also Mr. Henry. Property would make a good multifamily site once sewer is expanded, has limited neighbors. And then this one is from Mr. Quarter. This parcel, once sewer is available, will be a good location to bring some additional density to 35406. R1 zoning approximately, automatically sets it up for a fight. More density by ride is needed here because it is a desirable location and because it will be needed to help fund slash pay for infrastructure improvements to the area. So they're proposing to, what was the proposal specifically?
They, well, these also have, they propose SFR1 or multifamily or multifamily.
So it's being proposed as SFR1 in the draft map that we posted online. So I think that might have been an error on Mr. Quarter's part when he clicked that, but it looks like the consensus would be multifamily.
Is that, does that front on Sharp and Watermelon Road?
It does, yes.
It looks like a great mixed site, mixed-use type. I mean, you're going to have commercial, so I'm having trouble with it. I can't, this flow is hard, and the colors are hard to follow a little bit, but I'll get it in the switch.
I know, they're new colors.
But, so you're recommending, I'm still having a hard time understanding what you're recommending on that parcel and what Brock said.
So the...
So what are you saying, what are you saying that we said, and then what did he say?
The staff recommendation is only put in as SFR1. I know we've said it a lot of times, we were trying, we're trying not to upset the apple cart in too many instances. So in most cases, if it's SFR1 today, and there were no known plans for the property potentially, we put it in as a like-for-like, you know, zoning change. So it's R1 today, we put it as SFR1. There is some, I think there's some merit to a discussion about something with a little bit more density potentially because of the northern sewer expansion that is planned.
How many R1 developments do we do a year?
R1? Y'all rarely see them because they're pretty much by ride, just single-family homes.
So I think, I think, well, I agree with Brock saying, bring it, put in an R1, and then you go do something that makes sense, and everybody goes crazy about it and thinks you're hurting.
Sure.
When, when in reality, it was just a stroke to begin with. So makes you go back to the, every time you bring in a piece of property, you bring it in as R1. And then you do that, so everybody thinks that they're going to get high-horror over there next to them, and that's not going to happen. We haven't built a R1 development now. When was the last one? Maybe Lake Nickel? It's the only one that, Lake Nickel is the only one that I remember in the last decade. I mean, so we might even re-address, you know, bringing the properties in under R1 because it does create a ruckus.
So with this process, they'll actually all be coming in as open space because it just automatically comes in as the least, as the most restrictive district.
It does cause a fight up here every time we want to do something.
We'll let the attorneys take a look and see if they can find a loophole that lets us bring it back as something else.
Probably cut the meetings in half, I mean, I'm just saying.
I know, you know, you know we love our attorneys, they can find something, I'm sure.
And I'm saying that, so, I mean, that's a great place for a, for a mixed-use development. You know, we put those, didn't we put those pods in going out on the eastern side of the lake? We tried to look ahead on where there might need some commercial pods. This is the same type thing, and then, I mean, you know, he's saying multifamily, but you could also have a mixed-use development because there's been, there is commercial up there.
Totally.
It's adjacent, part of that road front is obviously adjacent to some commercial.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So we had two comments from Mr. Quarter and Mr. Henry. I'm assuming that that is read the way y'all were wanting to be read and understood. Do you have any comments? If not, okay, again, all those in favor of the recommendation?
I got a question. It's R1 now? And we wanting to go, they wanting to go to...
Multifamily.
Multifamily. You know, the only issue I have is, and I know some of these guys used to be my friends before what I'm fixing to say, is when this property, if it was brought into the city as R1, and the people that live around it didn't come up and complain because it came in as R1, now we fixing to change it to something else without their knowledge. Looks to me like if it's R1 now and they come up with a good project, nine times out of 10, this board and the council is going to support it.
And I think that's...
And change it without some kind of meetings. I hate to say it's trickery, but it does look like it's fair.
Well, that's, and that's the...
This is the meeting though, right? And then there'll be another opportunity in the summer.
All of these meetings are those meetings. And so, you know, I think that's the cool part about what's happening today not being the be-all, end-all. If this is something where the planning commission says, all right, I hear you, that's a good comment, yeah, we want to move forward with it being MFR, and the folks in the surrounding area don't like that, they can, they can make it known that they don't want to see that happen.
Well, it's also needs to be the property owner has the blessing as well.
Right.
Could change if somebody's zoning without them being in a...
Right.
I agree with that. I mean, we, we need to have some method by which, you know, that you're not changing somebody's zoning that they hadn't been notified about, obviously. And I don't know how we do that.
I mean, who does on it? I mean, so there is no petition, so we're just, we're playing God with it.
Well, I think this is, we're depending on, we didn't send letters to each one of the individuals in County Lane, tell them we're fixing to make this change. But this is a public meeting, and it is, it is public forum, and I guess that's part of the process that we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
So I, look, I agree with it. I think, I think this probably should be rezoned to that. But how do we, how do we not get tarred and feathered in August when we roll this out? Sure. And they just then realize.
Staff doesn't sleep between now and then, basically.
Yeah.
We're not going to get much sleep either.
No. None of us are sleeping.
So what about the, what about Steven's comment about the potential for a mixed-use development there? I mean, should we look at both of those potentials for the, how we do that?
So MR1 would allow a mix of MR1, MR2, I know we talked about that a little bit earlier. Those would allow for a broader mix. But I do think if someone wants to do, if someone wants to do something with a commercial aspect to it, they're always going to need to come and ask for it to be a GPD.
Right. Okay, so that would, so this would take care of that.
Well, what's the classification of Watermelon Road? What's it classified as?
A collector or above.
Okay, so common sense would say that, talked about density and mixed use and all that being directly impacted or have access to collector, right? I mean, logic would say that any parcel that would be adjacent to a collector, then logic would be more not just R1 because I think it has the ability to handle traffic. That's the thought.
And this does have limited impact on residential.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think there's... I would think whoever owns that property, next to, oh, great, I can get it to multifamily.
I kind of feel like I'm behind the curve a little bit, but it seems like to me, so we're R1, and we've had some recommendations, just some public comments that says this should be multifamily, right? Well, that's kind of like the two biggest extremes we have in zoning, okay? And I would say multifamily is one of those things where it gets shot at more than anything. We need it, okay? At the same time, it should be, it should be looked at very closely. So I, you know, is there something in the middle? I don't know, but I think if you just, if you just say, look, nobody came out, so no one's against it. Well, I can tell you, nobody, I don't know where they're posting this, but nobody's reading, okay? Because I promise you, if anybody next to this thought there was going to be 22 units, an acre built next to them, we'd be full. So to Tim's point, I don't know when the tar and feathering is going to occur, but it's going to occur. And so, so, yeah. Look, I own multifamily, I love multifamily, okay? I just feel like this is a, this is, this is kind of one of these, I mean, we didn't notify, we didn't notify the, if you're not touching this thing, we're not, they're not getting it, are they?
We are not sending mailings to anyone in the city of Tuscaloosa. But that's, but also, Commissioner, to be very fair, this has been one of the most open and transparent processes. This is, I'm not even going to say one of, it has been the most open and transparent process.
It's been so much that in so many meetings, that's almost, that's almost working.
There have been a lot of meetings, yes, sir.
It's like Mr. Runz is, we cry wolf every day because we're having a meeting, and people don't pay attention to it.
Well, we're just, we're just recommend that we...
You're recommending, you're about to recommend something to yourself. Yes, we are not making any official recommendation changes today.
Look, I can tell you, guy, whoever owns this property, he's going to be thrilled because he just got rid. They don't know it?
Mental health board owns it.
Okay, well, they just made a lot of money.
All right, so again, I don't think, I think that just to push the thing forward, we're not making any changes, but I think all the things are on the record that we're bringing up.
Yeah.
That it's on the record. That's the biggest thing we're saying here.
So I, I guess, at the end of the day, is there a, we can, we can vote to approve this, but I mean, is there a mechanism if we do make this radical change, that we do contact these people, allow them to know that physically it has been changed? I mean, and if we start doing that, man, this is going to be...
There's, there will be a...
Talking and thinking, and that doesn't work too well sometimes.
Right.
Yeah, I think you'll miss somebody, then that'll be another headache. I think at some point, we just have to continue to depend on, like, looking out.
Yes, that, that has been the attorney-approved process because it is a citywide rezoning. And nothing is being hidden, that it's all very accessible. And we may, we will find a way, you remember the slidey map that they made for us that said, okay, this was the original proposal, this is the final, what we'll do? We will have them make another slidey map that identifies things that have, things that have changed between now and then. But there is, and there has to be through this process, the onus is on the property owners. If they care what their property zoning will be as a part of this process.
Well, who would mental health is supposed to show up?
No one.
But Steven, here's, here's what I think we need to be cautious of, and like you said, rezoning this to an SFR1 does two things. It creates, it makes it a, it creates it...
An expectation.
It's going to be a more expensive piece of property. So we're actually doing this owner a favor by allowing him to do that. So I think it, we need to be cautious and not try to rezone something that would reduce the economic impact of a piece of property. So anything we're doing is increasing economics of this property to that owner. I mean, and so as we're going through this, and I also think that if we do make a mistake, which we're going to make some mistakes,
All right, so...
that will be conducive to, if they come before us afterwards and say, y'all change this, and I want to change back.
Under that guise, you can take that big map, you know, and all that, all that land in the county out there. And what Brock said, I don't disagree with him, but he said, well, this, you know, when the sewer line's out there, and it's not near many people, so it's a perfect place for multifamily. Well, you just go ahead and take that whole swath of land and put multifamily on it because you just increased the value of it. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, we can just call it a day and just make it all that color.
So I think what we could do is, you know, you guys don't necessarily make a recommendation at this point.
We're picking and choosing winners here.
We can go back and kind of put that as a discussion point, maybe, I don't know.
It's...
Or do you want a recommendation?
I just, listen, I need, I very desperately, I would love it if, if we could get through the comments, I think. Because these discussions are perfect, they are what have to happen. Because we are in the muck and the mire, we are in that place in life where we knew we were going to get to, and we're probably going to be here until seven o'clock tonight, and that is perfectly fine. All that being said, I think it is a prudent conversation that we are having about going through on property that is vacant today, how do you want to handle? Because a lot of the comments you're going to get tonight are ones of, hey, this is a cool site for X. I think it should probably be upzoned to this. And it's a, it's a conversation that has to happen. And lucky you, planning commission members, you get to have that one.
Let's figure this out, Alex, that we've got, how many comments?
You got a, you got a bit, you got a bit.
Yeah, we'll never get through it all.
Oh, we're gonna.
But I think, I think the most important thing really is, they can have their thoughts, and whoever made these comments has the thought, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm more interested in hearing, not about the individual thought, I'm more interested, while they're here, if there's something that is top of mind, that's big picture, what we're doing tonight and doing going forward, or to hear from them. I think we're going to get in the weeds on every little piece of property we go through. We'll be here, we'll go through three, we'll be at seven o'clock. And we're, we set five to seven, so...
We are in the weedy part, though.
I understand that, but there's no way we're going to get through this whole thing. But then it's important to get through this in the right way because this is going to be replicated all across the city.
It will.
We can't hurry it.
No.
Right? But I don't know how we get through tonight.
Okay, I mean...
What's the best path? Is it best with each one or to hear from the...
I mean, I sat here probably as you pulled a, you put an apartment building next to my neighborhood. I sat here going, you know, okay, you know, north one, north.
It's not as if we're approving a multifamily.
No, you are absolutely doing that.
No, we're not.
Once this is read about...
It'll come before us with a lot of specifics and criteria and a traffic study.
Oh, really? Is that right?
Eventually, before it gets...
If you, if you zone that multifamily?
Yes. I mean, so it has to be approved, right?
I mean, if it's zoned multifamily and they can...
If it's going to be a...
Build it by right. It won't necessarily have to come to you guys for final approval, but the city obviously would be looking at our ordinance and the regulations in place.
Exactly.
But it wouldn't necessarily come to you guys or City Council.
Yes, but it's not as if, I mean, I, I, it seems to me we've already agreed on a process and made it public and explained what we're doing.
Yeah.
We will, there will be, there are future opportunities to correct this or change it and have more public comment. And, you know, I don't, I don't...
Well, let's get on over here next to your neighborhood then and put some multifamily then. I'm, I'm finally... I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that because, I mean, th- this is, there's definitely picking winners and losers here and playing god, but, but to her point, we've gotta do it, so, okay.
No. My problem is, I don't know when this was brought into the city, but when I was on the council for eight years, we brought property into the city as R1. And then the developer would say, bring it in as R1 and I won't change it to industrial or whatever, and we'd do it at the same meeting.
Right.
All right, so.
And people around that property had the opportunity to express concerns. And I understand what Ashley's saying, but it's like Mr. Runz says, don't hurt anybody's feelings, but who looks at this stuff?
All right, so to your point.
Nine times out of ten, nobody pays attention to it unless they know for sure it's gonna hit them. And this property was brought in as R1 and then we're gonna change it. I wouldn't feel, I don't feel like doing that no more than I feel like doing Mr. Henry or Mr. Corner's property, putting a pig farm next to their property without them having the authority to say, no, I don't want it.
And then, but Dan's saying, you'll get it, you'll get it, you might get a public notice in the future, you might read and come up here. I'm just saying, I don't, these public notices, with all due respect, I trust them about like, you know, I do Joe Biden, okay? So, I mean, they, they just, they, they don't, they don't get, they don't, they, the public, we, we don't have a great, we, we may be trying and we may be doing just like every other city, but the public does not get the message good. And on this, they obviously haven't. And, and Brock is making a good point. It's a, it's a piece of land out there with not great density around it. And, and, and maybe Mental Health would like to build some apartments and they need to petition us. And, and I realize that, that if they have to go from R1 to multifamily, it's a big, it's a bigger, it's a bigger lift, okay? But, you know, you start just, just because Brock says Mental Health ought to be zoned a multifamily, okay, that's his opinion, all right? But, but if they wanna build apartments, they need to come see us. We don't need to make them apartment owners, apartment builders just because they weren't here.
That goes to the point about changing somebody's zoning without them being aware of it. So, I don't know how we can get over this.
So, I, I think, you know, if you think about it, it's zoned R1 today. We're proposing to zone it SFR1. There's really not, might not even be anything changing on the property that you can or can't build going from one zoning to the next. And so, they would today have to go through this process if they wanted to do that, they will in the future if you guys keep it SFR1.
I think the best point he made is, is that this, is zoning things R1 does make it more difficult for this board. But I, I would say that that is an extreme to start, to start zoning things multifamily. Because there's nothing that makes the public more, more uptight than, than apartments. I know that from personal experience.
Yeah, that's true.
So, we're, we're proposing to go to SFR1.
We are proposing to go to SFR1.
It's a single family, still single family, resident.
I hear you.
Oh, I thought, I, okay. I thought the way it was said was.
I think they, I think we've changed our, I think we've changed course. All right, Commissioner, you've got this, we've got this process. I know you're getting your, your ski and your bike legs back under you. We've got this this evening and I know we can get through the rest of this. So, are y'all in a place where you would like to recommend to yourselves that this stay SFR1?
Yes.
All that, all of the place say aye?
Aye.
That was posed.
All right. Uh, there is a comment here in the middle of the screen, um, that got put on the wrong piece of property. So, Chad Gore, um.
You want me to read it in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Chad Gore, submitted by Chad Gore, I would like to request that the Riverwood Presbyterian Church property on Rice Valley Road be zoned SFR4. I currently have the property under contract to purchase with intent to develop.
Um, I found that one, I've put it on the right piece of property. So, we're just kind of, we're zooming around on the map for a moment.
This, this is one that we've already made the change, this is submitted by Richard Henry. Site would better, would be better used as commercial if redeveloped. We identified that it wasn't part of High Grove planned unit development. And so, that was inaccurately re-zoned on that part.
So, you'll see, we have handled the comments that have gone on in this section, those are taken care of. Let's zoom up here to this corner.
Submitted by Andy Turner, this area should be zoned to reflect what is planned in the Lake Nickel, Lake Harris master plan. So, to clarify this comment, I think it might have been one of those what Ashley kinda referred to initially was, you see industri, you see pink, you think industrial, um, or something. Cause it is, it is actually the, what, what we're proposing is what Lake, um, Lake Nickel and Harris Lake master plan identifies it as is.
So, it's consistent.
It's consistent with that, as you can see on this.
The, the, and the paint.
In the paint.
Which parcel, with all these colors?
Yeah. So, we're looking at this little area right here is.
Is it one more time?
Mm-hmm.
And so, what are we?
So, really, there's, Mr. Turner, I think this is no change.
We've addressed, we've addressed Mr. Turner's question.
Just wanted to clarify that with you guys.
All right, so zooming out again, just for transparency's sake, let's scroll down a touch to this piece of property here.
All right, this is submitted by Brock Corner, commercial uses will be needed in this area to support the residential growth that is coming. The east side of New Watermelon is a good spot, it's on the going home side. So, he is submitting it as lake commercial as what he wants to see it. Right now, it's submitted as lake residential.
Hey, Tim, what do you think?
You know.
Let's get Sharon on the phone teller to zoom in on this.
I'd like, I'd like to have it, it'd be marked up there. I mean, I, you know, at the end of the day, it's with the, with the development that's coming up there, I, I, I don't, I'm actually gonna kill me when I say this. I, it's, it, it has its, has its plight, to be honest. Now, I'm probably gonna get beat over the head.
But I think it ought, I think it ought to be multifamily.
What did y'all, what did staff making recommendations on this or fix anything on this? That's just still a comment.
It's just a comment. Um.
We fought this battle before, didn't we?
We have fought this battle before.
And you're gonna fight it again if you do it, I promise you. Um, but, I, I, again, with the development that's coming with Rice Ferry Road, there, it's, it's coming.
Would, if you'd like to entertain it, you can entertain it, if you don't wanna entertain it, we can just let it sit.
I'm on abstain, so I can.
You know, we can't do that.
There.
I, I did this on that, on that apartment complex going in North Fluff, I sat over here, you know, going, my neighbors are gonna kill me.
I'm, I'll take bullet for Tim on this one, I think he's right. Now, it's about, I know coming down the line, but we gotta have some commercial up there at some point in that area.
Well, we, we designated some commercial pods, you remember, we, we have got.
That was more the pods, wasn't it?
I don't know, is it?
No, that wasn't.
No.
No, we, about every, about every half mile, we have a commercial pod up there.
This, this is the one that Andy proposed originally, that, that vote, or came out of this.
So, what you proposed in the future land use character map is this is the interchange, or not the interchange, the intersection of Rice Mine and McRice Ferry, there's a commercial pod, this property's in the county today. And then, uh, this is a commercial pod next to the water tower. And you see, we actually extended the commercial up into this area as well in accordance with the lake master plan.
And if you go on up, you have a couple more.
Yeah, you do, the county property, we've got a few more up in here too, like that.
All right. So, basically, we're.
But I, I'm on, I will say to you, when this is, when this is noted, you're gonna have about 400 people coming up here planning.
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's go to these.
All right, this is submitted by Brock Corner, should be higher density by right, tremendous growth opportunity with the new McRice Ferry Road. Same for the large tract to the south and west of this parcel. And he would like it to be SFR5. Um, this is submitted by Richard Henry, site is already flat and prepared for development. Uh, would be, would make it for a good garden home community or town home development, and he's proposing SFR4.
Oak Chase would be what?
Oak Chase, actually, the, the lot sizes, we actually met with Brock and he asked that same question. Those are, um, about 13,000 square feet. Uh, so they would meet the R1 standards today, and so it's SFR1. Um, the proposal for this property just, just south of that, that we're talking about, is proposed to be SFR2. So, a little bit higher density than what Oak Chase is today.
But. Well, that's where you're getting Oak Chase, people saying, my property values would go down, traffic study and.
I mean, that, that is a fair assessment because obviously right there, that's where McRice Ferry Road is in their time. That road directly into Bluegrass Parkway, straight ahead, there's gonna be some congestion there.
Yeah, so the existing zoning for that property is SFR2, or is R2, and so we're proposing it as SFR2.
And that matches Oak Chase?
Oak Chase is zoned R1 today and the lot sizes do reflect R1 zoning.
What size do you have to be R1, I'm sorry?
12,000 square feet.
Cause they look, they look kinda small.
They do look small, I thought the same thing, so I measured them myself and.
But, um, so we're materially, they'll materially be building something that's the same.
Um, size-wise?
So, the density will be how much greater? See, I'm still trying to get used to these different numbers and these different designations, honestly, I mean.
Well, these, so today, your R2 zoning is 9,000 square feet, SFR2 is 9,000 square feet.
Okay, so, so.
So, when, uh, SFR4, a single family detached home, the minimum lot size is.
Forty-five.
And we're getting used to it as well, um, minimum lot size would be 7,000 square feet. Or no, I'm sorry, 7,500 square feet. And SFR5, minimum lot sizes would be 4,500 square feet.
So, right now, they have to have, you say they have to have seven or 9,000?
9,000 now.
And, and we're gonna allow them to go to 4,500?
The proposal is either.
It's an ask.
Yeah, it's either SFR5, which is 4,500, or SFR4, which was 6,000, I think.
So, to your, kinda, kinda to your point is, so, so we've got one thing now. We've, we've sat up here, several of us for years. And over and over and over again, we're seeing greater density to make the numbers work. And if we wanna get deals done, we're gonna have to be flexible. On the other hand, the expectation that's been provided, you can't whack something and, and hurt someone that doesn't really have a, they have a right to be here, but there's no way that, that they got the message that maybe something's going on adjoining their backyard. So, I think we need to be careful about making, make the density too high. I mean, I, I would, you know, look, I, 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 this time of year, I mean, where, where do you go to read this stuff? Where, you know, where's, when someone's about to rezone a property in your backyard, where I, where, where would, how would I? There was no, so where would they get this stuff? Cause, cause if you go to 4,500 feet and they think, right now, they think they're gonna be housed just like theirs, right? And, and so.
So, again, these comments, any, anybody could have gone in and made a comment that said, heck no, I want that property to be commercial. That's everyone's right. Everyone is going to have a right to put a comment on the map and say, I think this property should be zoned something different. And it's this meeting, uh, that we've relied on stakeholders, council members, our planning commission members, uh, staff just knowing who to talk to, letting Tantino, um, getting the word out that this meeting is even happening. And that's why tonight's decisions are not be all end alls. So, Commissioner, if you don't want to entertain the idea of increasing density in this one, I would challenge you to just say, thank you, but no, thank you, and let's move on to the next one. Yeah, 100%, you don't have to take these up, you can just say, meh, I don't wanna do that. Yeah.
Those lots are 1,000?
13,000.
13, actually.
I know.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is a case where we, in my opinion, I, I can't vote with good conscience for it because I agree with it because you're, you're, you got somebody adjacent right across the fence that you're doubling the density and they have no way, would, they, i- i- if these people were aware of it, like every one of them.
We're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to bulletproof, have bulletproof ass.
All right. Move on to the next area. Uh, this is from Richard Henry, property is located on Major Road, if redeveloped, would make sense to be more dense. And he's proposing SFR4. Right now, it's proposed as SFR1. So, of course, McRice Ferry Road is going right through this area. The green, like the light green that you see there, those are planned unit developments. So, all of those were developed as PUDs. And so, now they're GPD in the future. So, they'll still remain the same.
Okay, moving to the next one. So, Commissioner, just again, for transparency's sake, rolling it out, we've handled the comments on the east side of the lake, moving down McRice Ferry, we're gonna come in down low.
This is submitted by Richard Henry, this site sits on the corner of some busy roads with very limited neighbors, might make more sense to allow for more development. And he's proposing highway commercial, right now, it's zoned, it's being proposed as neighborhood commercial. So, highway commercial would be, there is an in-between, which is general commercial. So, you go neighborhood commercial, general commercial, highway commercial. Um, but right now, it's being proposed as neighborhood commercial, which matches what we're proposing for other areas within this area as well. But again, they, as Mr. Henry stated, they're not directly adjacent to where the eastern bypass is.
Good example of something that, that we allow under, under what his recommendation.
Yeah, so, a good example here would be, a gas station could be, could be developed under general commercial and of course, highway commercial, um, but not under neighborhood commercial.
You know, I, I think Richard's got a great point. There, there's, we're not touching anybody and it, I mean, it's, 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 it's surrounded by streets and it, if you're gonna, there's gonna be some, some tight businesses that we need, then that's a great place to put them.
So, you guys see store?
The property down below it, is that, I mean, the gray, that's, that's.
So, that's.
That'll be where the interchange, the round, roundabout on ramp situation is.
But, but Stephen, if they do that, they can just come in for a rezoning at that point.
I mean, this is, this is gnashing teeth, I've already chewed my fingernails off my hands, you know? Because this is a lot, I mean, there's gonna have, there're gonna be a lot of people that, that, when Santa Claus comes, they're very disappointed in the back switches they got.
But, but I mean, this one is a little different to me because it's still in a commercial, uh, arena.
And you're saying, you're saying that they could come up?
Yeah.
And, and we would unlike, we would not unlike to say, if you wanna build a Detsuko station, we, we may consider that?
Correct, we may consider that.
I mean.
But if you're gonna tire of it, yes.
We may not, right. I mean, we, we'll have some control over that at that point.
Okay. I agree with that too, I mean, I agree with everybody.
So, what I'm hearing is keeping it neighborhood commercial? All right.
We're, we're keeping it.
Yeah.
All right, scrolling out, um, I'm gonna, we're coming back to all the dots at the end. Um, let's hit this one really quickly.
All right, so this is Richard Henry, shallow lot facing Main Street would make a good town home site. SFR4 is what he's proposing. Uh, this is right by that River Chase subdivision just south of Werner School District. I think it's a vacant lot today. So, essentially, more, more density in this area for some sort of development like a town home.
All right, next one.
All right, this is again, Mr. Richard Henry, uh, if the church ever moved, it would not be developed as single family, should go ahead and zone for future use. So, this is the Church of Latter Day Saints off of Academy Drive. They, he wants to rezone it to neighborhood commercial. Right now, we're proposing SFR1.
What, what is it currently?
It's currently a church and SFR1.
Yeah, I think, isn't that a joint with Fox Run over there?
Yeah, it's right next to Fox Run.
Like. Ranger, did you say you're recommending all?
Uh, we're not really recommending, but I'm just stating some facts for you. So, it's a church existing today, uh, Mr. Henry wants to see it go to neighborhood commercial, commercial. And it's, we're proposing it to be R one, just because it's R one, or SFR one, because it's R one today.
You know, we got McFarland Boulevard a quarter of a mile, so I mean, I'm not necessarily...
I'd like to keep that where it is.
I think it's premature.
Yeah.
All right.
Move on.
All right, we are up in the Rice Valley Road north area now. Oh, I missed one, I'm sorry. We're gonna head to Indian Hills, and then we'll go north.
All right, so this is submitted by Brock Quarter. Not sure that private property should be zoned as open space, even in its current use. If the county, if the country club ever failed to exist, this property would or could be redeveloped as a GPD. So he is proposing GPD. Uh, we did meet with Mr. Quarter and, um, kinda clarified that the only things that are gonna be zoned right now as GPD are existing PUDs. Um, so if Indian Hills Country Club goes downhill in some, in some, um, situation, then they would just come back and propose a PUD, a GPD to you guys, which would then, you know, y'all would do the full review, and then it would go to council for approval, so... And, uh, just to clarify another thing, the golf course in North River, we're proposing that as open space, so it, it's similar to what we're doing in other parts of the city.
All right. Uh, we have handled this Tuscaloosa Academy comment. It's a private school, should be ISP.
This is Mr. Henry. Great opportunity to do something similar to Maple Ridge or other garden home subdivisions in this area. GPD, uh, not really clear on that comment. I don't know if you wanted to... Yeah, you might have placed it on a different property.
On this one?
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
So we can move to that one then. Um, so this is from Brock Quarter. Highest, highest and best use for this property is for it to be redeveloped with higher density than R one. Proper buffering and access can limit any perceived negative connotations to North Hampton. The current structure is in disrepair because no one wants to buy it as R one lot. Similar developments on Rice Valley Road have been done well, done and well, and the impact to the area has been positive. And so, uh, Mr. Quarter's proposing MF, MFR, multifamily residential. And then this is Richard Henry, same property. Due to fronting Rice Valley Road, use should be in more keeping with the other higher density uses on the Main Street, should be SFR four. So somewhere around the higher density, SFR four, MR, uh, MFR is what's being submitted there. I will say, you know, y'all have seen that property as well. Um, I'm sure y'all drive past it, I do all the time. It's, it is a decrepit home that can't be sold.
But I don't feel an obligation to get him his money, okay? So we, you could lot it up, and it'd be just like everybody else, and it wouldn't be worth what he's asking. I don't feel, I don't feel an obligation to up, to, to zone it to where he can get it.
And, you know, it did come before y'all, and it was denied, um, so, or recommended for denial.
But it, but he's right, it needs to be higher density than R one. But if you throw, you, you throw an apartment complex there, then I'm moving.
Well, the, you know, I, I think, I, I, I agree with you that when, when we looked at that, my, last time, I just felt like it was getting too dense to, for the adjacent neighbors, and there wasn't enough buffer. Given the right project, yeah.
Yeah.
And we were real close on the last one, real close.
So I'm hearing keeping it SFR one is proposed currently?
All right, one more on Rice Valley Road North.
All right, so this is from Chad Gore.
One last thing about that. That site, it really wasn't, the density was one thing, but remember, it was more of an ingress egress. There was, there were some wrecks there that were causing angst, so, so looking at a color on a map is important, but there are other things.
So this is submitted from Chad Gore. Uh, I would like to request that the River, Riverwood Presbyterian Church property on Rice Valley Road be considered SFR four. Uh, it's current, I currently have it under, under contract, so he is proposing SFR four. It currently is R, R one today, and we are in the draft proposing it as R one.
You know, I think this one specifically, I won't look at it before I make that decision, but I mean, again, it's based on what the project is.
Which daughter are we looking at?
Riverwood Presbyterian Church.
Yeah.
And this one, I think, Commission, you will likely see in coming months for just a rezoning request, um, as it's under contract. And if that is to happen, I would suggest, you know, and let's say the rezoning request is successful, um, I think we would want to line up the zoning.
This is the second I've seen under contract, and I don't know how long that contract is. There's nothing gonna be voted on until seven, eight months.
Well, and a rezoning does give notice, um, individual notice.
I assume that some of the people in the audience thought we were voting tonight to make these changes, correct?
Um, we have tried, we've tried to explain, but I think this process is new for everyone, and, you know, knowing that tonight is not the be all end all, I think that gives a lot of, I hope, a bit of relief.
Yeah, it allows for further discussion after this meeting.
You know, Walt does those mayor's minutes. Why don't you do the planning and zoning direction?
I should just do, I should do urban development minutes. I should go in the podcast, you should tell someone. City Hall TV.
All right, so a lot of these comments here are the same or very similar, um, but we'll read them into the record. So this is the Cedar Brook area, kinda close to, um, Taco Casa off Rice Valley, or, sorry, off Rice Mine Road.
Well, and we think this dot ended up on the wrong thing, Mr. Armstrong. Yeah, Dan's given us a thumbs up. So this applies down here in the Cedar Brook area.
Yeah, so I'll read this. Uh, this is submitted by Dan Armstrong. Frontage in this area should be considered for GC zoning due to location on high traffic corridor and proximity to other similar zoned parcels. So GC is the recommendation. So that dot was, yeah, it's really all where these dots are. So you can see, you know, there's kinda the commercial piece on this side, and then residential on this side, so it's kinda pertaining to this whole area, all these... This dot was meant to be here, so that's...
Those properties are already...
No.
There's a lot of, yeah. Where the dots, where all the dots are, kinda?
Yeah.
That area. Yeah, so there's a lot of vacant...
They weren't redeveloped. Yes, they are structured there.
Yeah. Yeah, so you can see, we're gonna be talking about, kinda the right-hand side is the commercial aspect on Rice Mine, and then the left-hand side is the Cedar Brook Drive.
Right.
Piece. All right, so this is from Clay Hudson. This site needs to be designated as MFR, as it has been advertised for the last three years. Up to three weeks ago, when it changed to SFR four, MFR will provide a better, better use and have more flexibility for, for development regarding changing market conditions for years to come. So MFR is the suggestion. This site, uh, this is the same comment.
And there are, there are the same comment on the individual properties. We just wanted to, to show that for transparency's sake.
Where is the current zoning on this piece, Mike?
So the, yeah, so a little, I guess I could say a little bit of history on this property. It's R four today, it was rezoned R four, proved to be rezoned R four. Uh, however, there is a caveat on that re, caveat on that rezoning that it has to be zo, re, it has to be developed as a PUD. So no matter what's developed there, it has to be developed through a planned unit development today, as it exists.
Commission, oh, go ahead, Mr. Pons.
And we're proposing it as SFR four, um, in our update.
And I think it is fair, Commission, um, that we as staff, we made a mistake on this one, we think. Um, it, SFR four is probably not the most appropriate. Um, multifamily, MR one or two is probably what needs to happen based on the current zoning of R four. I think amongst ourselves, there had initially been some, uh, some back and forth about how do we handle, like, what does R four become in the future? And, um, R four becomes MR one, not SFR four.
All right, so R four, you could build, what, give me an example.
Today, you can build apartments, fifteen dwelling units per acre apartments.
And it's zoned R four now?
Yeah. We, I mean, we agree. There's, there's a mistake that's been made.
The yellow.
This is the one we've seen.
Yeah.
The yellow is on apartments, the rest of it...
Yes, the pink, the pink is neighborhood commercial, what's being proposed, and you see on the app, it's a little bit BGO, BN, and R one today.
Yeah, so I guess we didn't really read the, the commercial comments yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry.
No, you're good.
Go ahead.
Uh, so this is from Clay Hudson. As the title owner of this property, I would like to ask, why would this site be designated neighborhood commercial when the current zoning is BN? The site is, the site by current zoning definition would be better suited in compatibility to GC when compared to the current draft ordinance language. NC neighborhood commercial is not a good fit for this location. If zoning changes are made to, the conversion should be compatible to existing zoning and not drastically changed. So he's, he's suggesting GC instead of NC on this property.
Which is compatible to BN.
It is, yeah. So, you know, again, it, BN, as, you know, Ms. Kreid stated earlier, was kind of like a hodgepodge of... We didn't really have a good, um, middle ground between BGO, BN, and then highway commercial and general commercial. But all that to say, that doesn't necessarily mean that this should be NC versus GC.
You, you've got a rationale based on your recommendations, so what is it?
Um, I think, I'll let...
You're, you're at a major corridor, um, at Old Colony, and I think the initial recommendation was allowing a step down closer to the neighborhoods. Um, you know, you've got, you've got major, a major corridor for commercial in here, and then based on the current uses and some other things, uh, you start to step down closer to the neighborhoods was perhaps the initial rationale. Um, but with the current zoning today, you know, this corner is straight up BN, this church is zoned R one, um, and it could very much be zoned commercially as well. Uh, and as you just continue to step down, so really, I think the, the main question to answer to start may be, what do you do with the commercial? Do you change it back to a more GC situation, which would be appropriate for a major intersection? Um, and then how do you handle, how do you step it down for the Cedar Brook property itself, potentially?
So the Cedar Brook property will allow apartments on it right now?
Through a PUD. They, um, you know, it's R four under the condition that it be developed as a PUD. And so today, they, like, even if they wanted to build a single-family home on each individual lot, uh, under R four standards, they would have to come through the PUD process and say, this is our single-family home PUD, we would like to build this. So they still have to ask permission for it. So, um, if you looked at something like MR two, um, there would be material standards for that piece of property. It would have the, the density, um, and then it would also have, it would have the density that it carries today, which I think is a problem if you go to SFR four, potentially. Um, and then you would have material standards for the protection for the neighborhood to the south.
So SS, SFR two is virtually about what it's under now, except it's not called a PUD.
Uh, no, today, it's R four, which in the future will really be MR one or MR two.
The whole horse, not the whole horse?
No, the residential piece.
Residential.
The residential piece, yes.
Yeah. So I think, one way we could do this is we could kinda tackle the commercial piece first, cause I feel like that's a little bit easier to kinda talk about if y'all wanted to, and then shift to the commercial piece.
Yeah, let's do it one at a time.
If I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, the commercial piece is currently what, BN?
Yes.
Correct.
And you're right, and they, and they're asking for GC, which is compatible.
It is compatible.
So, yeah, I mean, that's logical in my mind.
Yeah.
And it, and then now, what, what was the other part of the question?
Uh, so essentially, if we can kinda get a consensus among y'all on the GC piece, and then we can shift into the residential.
So, GC is close to the BN, and why would it be compatible? I guess my thoughts is, you know, he's got a very, he's got a zoning right now that allows him to do a whole lot. In fact, he can put that tire chain in store your time out there, and then down there. So, so I would be upset if I were him and someone changed it, because he, he can do about anything he wants.
He's the one that's asking.
Huh?
Owner's asking.
No, I thought he was, I thought he wanted to keep it.
No, he wants it to become GC.
He wants to, oh, okay.
So if y'all agree with that, like, we can just, we can...
Yeah. I, I didn't realize.
There's one no brainer for mine.
All right, so I think we got that. Now, we'll shift into the commer, the residential piece.
And you're saying MR one or MR two would be an option?
I, it's a better option than SFR four. Like I said at the beginning, I'll eat crow when I need to, and this is one of those eat crow.
This is where we got the property on the building here, and we're saying that that's appropriate or comparable zoning as he has now, then that makes, that makes sense.
Multifamily MR two or MR one.
And y'all can fight it out, you and the property owner.
Great. Thank you. I love, I love to fight with Mr. Hudson.
No, we all.
We've suggested MR two might be a reasonable compromise.
You can't, I can't, you gotta comment, you can come to the microphone, please. Is that your name and address for the record?
Joseph Cox, uh, Five College Park, representing Mr. Hudson. We would suggest that MR two might be a fair compromise, uh, for that piece of property, and similar to what it is now.
I think the staff recommended that.
Staff agrees that, so we, we agree with that. Next?
All right, Commission, we, Mr. Pons, would you like to take this up there? I'm sorry. We have made it through the dots on the map, Commission.
All right, so now we've got, um, four people who've signed up. Uh, Joseph Cox is first on the list. He is, and then Brock Quarter, second on the list.
Evening. I'll be brief. Uh, Brock Quarter, thirteen oh seven Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Here tonight, representing the Home Builder Association of Tuscaloosa, um, we have about a hundred builder members and four hundred associates. We're very thankful for this process, thankful for the opportunity to be involved in this. I, I served on the steering committee. I feel like I've, I've lived framework for the last three years, so, um, you know, we've, as, as an organization, our members have submitted comments. We've had meetings with staff and are appreciative of all that. This change is needed. We need, we need to change our zoning ordinance, and we need to update it to be more current. Um, just briefly, two concerns that I think have, uh, come out tonight, and I think they're important, that we, uh, try to get right going forward, uh, as a community. Uh, you know, there are three possible outcomes for every property owner in this city. I believe almost every parcel is changing zoning because of this. Now, it might be a comparable zoning, but texturally, it's changing a name, so there is, in effect, a change in zoning for just about every property in this city. And what that means is three things could happen for that property owner. They could emerge with a, with the same use, they could emerge with a worse use, or they could emerge with a better use. And I think something that's important from our perspective is that we at least do no harm to the property owner. Uh, every property owner should emerge with at least the same, uh, rights that they have today or better. Uh, and then the one thing that I think has come out that, um, out of this whole discussion is, what is the process as we go through this? When we have comments and we submit them, and we want to, we would like to see a resolution on those comments. And so is that, there were certain comments that were taken up tonight that were voted on verbally and said, yeah, we wanna include that. Some were talked about and not voted on, is, I just think there needs to be consistency. I, I, I agree to disagree. I mean, there's gonna be comments that the commission disagrees with, and that's fine. I didn't have a personal interest in any of the properties that I commented on. What I was approaching it from the standpoint of is, you know, what are the opportunities in our city to see development, and where could those developments be? And I may be wrong about those. I'm willing to admit that, and I appreciated the discussion. But I do think the most important part for property owners and for, for neighbors is to have the process clear so that we know how the comments will be taken up, will they be voted on to be a recommendation for the final vote, or, or how that's gonna work. So, uh, with that being said, that's all the comments I've got.
All right, so...
I would agree that we need to probably take it, but not gonna recommend that.
So, so Brock said, Brock says that no one should be harmed by any zoning, okay? Well, the zoning was done in nineteen seventy-two, the tornado blew the city down, and, and then we, we came in here and did what was right, what we thought was right for the community because it had changed since nineteen seventy-two. You just can't make everybody happy. They didn't have setbacks in seventy-two, okay? So sometimes you have to do what's in the best interest of the community.
Sure.
And you can't give everybody, I mean, you'd like to think you could, you could, you could improve everybody's situation, but, but when you say you get, don't, don't do something that will make them better off. You say make them better off. I mean, that's also in the... don't do something that will make them better, you say make them better off. I mean, that's also in the, in the eye of the beholder. I never would have dreamed Clay would have just downgraded his property, okay? I mean, he, he, so he thinks, he thinks down, downzoning it is, is good for him, so, but you never would have bet that, would you?
I probably would have been upset. You realize that we are a group of mostly property owners and property rights are very important to us. And, you know, I think it's, as a property owner, if I have the right right now to do a certain density or a certain type of development, if some of that is taken away from me.
Okay.
I, I personally believe that's a taking and I, I'm not saying that I would go this route, but I think that opens the city up to potential litigation in the future.
Well, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. So, so the S and H green stamp story, y'all remember where, where it was, sitting on Fifteenth Street? With no, no setback, okay? Get hit, get hit by the tornado and so you think we should have just let him build it right on back up there on the street? With, with zero parking, by the way.
I don't know if I agree with it in that position, but I.
It was a nineteen seventy, in other words, it was built before seventy-two. They put zoning regulations in in seventy-two because we needed them. And, and of course, when it got blown away, it didn't meet any of them, so, but, but, but under, but under what you're saying is that we should have just said, well, since he had it before, he should build it back. I mean, sometimes, you know, as it turned out, he was much better off because, you know, he was, he ended up much better off.
I don't have a magic wand to say on every piece of property and, and I think what you're saying is a very valid point there. All I'm saying is, for that gentleman to have the right to build back his store if it gets wiped out by a tornado, that's, that's the litmus test I would.
Yeah.
Look at.
And there's just no possible way because we had zoning requirements at that point. It had setbacks and parking. So things do change and you have.
Sure.
Every twenty, thirty, forty years, we've got to do something, which is what we're doing now, right? Actually, I mean, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to fix some, some ills in the system.
Yeah, again, I, I think the change is needed. I think I was just saying from a, from a philosophical standpoint as a community and as a group, we ought to approach first not to do any harm.
I, I agree with you personally. I'm saying that, but in this, in this, the position we have, we, we have to look, we also have to consider what's best for the community.
True.
And the neighbors, not just that single property owner. I mean, but I've got, I've got some real estate too and I don't, you know, I, I feel the same way you do. I'd like to come out of every, every zoning situation better, but.
Brock, I think. I don't envy your position.
From our standpoint, and I, I understand what you're saying. I, I would like to see a level of consistency too, but every piece of property is different.
Sure.
And I think, and I, I think being consistent, I don't think we can do. I mean, I think we, 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 our goal would be not to harm an individual by rezoning his property, either keep him the same or make it better. I get it. Our off, our goal also is to effectively look at adjacent property and see what rezoning this property does to those people, so. Again, every, in my mind, every parcel is different. I think everybody on this board's got a pretty good understanding of, if we're making a bad decision putting a, a more dense piece of property up against the, right next to a line that's less dense. Nobody wants that.
Sure.
And that's, that's all the fights we have. There's, there's some, there's some property out there that I agree, that, that we might should have, we, we might can rezonate for more dense. And, and I understand y'all's concept. You need density to, people, people to change. Kids this age want to live closer to each other. I don't know why. But.
In fact, most of our, most of our petitions are asking for more density. I mean, almost everywhere.
But I mean, I, I, I would like to get as, as, as in line as we could, but I just don't think we can because every, every situation is different.
Sure. And I think that's why it's important that the process be consistent as you take up the comments.
Like.
Thank you.
Next.
All right, next up we have Chuck Bracknell.
Thank you. Next.
Dan Armstrong.
Good evening, Dan Armstrong. I live in Birmingham, but I own property in this district and some other districts, so I'm in the weird position where, I think I'm the last speaker, but Ashley stole all my thunder. I had some concerns about some of the codes and some of the zoning designations and they, they've been addressed, so I appreciate your consideration for that. I also own some property in, I think it's District Four, and I just had a specific concern and I don't want to take up too much time about when it comes to rezoning existing property. Something that, when it comes to financing property, if you rezone an existing property, and again, I believe they've made an allowance for this and I applaud them for, for listening to me drone on about something that's, that's really specific about existing property and that is where if you, if you rezone a property and you reduce the density, and it can cause issues with your bank or permanent lender financing. And that's just something I'm hopeful that, clearly the staff is listening and I, I think y'all are listening too and I appreciate that. To avoid people coming to that unwelcome realization three years from now, because as, as you've mentioned, some, not everybody was quite aware of what's going on. And, you know, something that at the risk of, I don't, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but if, even if a property is grandfathered in that case, so if I've built ten units an acre and it's rezoned inadvertently, I believe, to five units an acre, something like that, when it comes time to refinance it, you'll tell the lender, well, it's, it's grandfathered. Well, they're going to say, what happens if it's destroyed? And I think Mr. Rumsey mentioned a tornado, fire, that sort of thing, and so I'll be quiet after this, but you may hear that in the future as it relates to some of these properties. I, I believe that the ones that I had an interest in will be addressed, so I just thank you for your time.
We do not have anyone else signed up.
Okay.
There may be.
Yeah, we, what do you want to care to speak for or have comment or whatever you want to comment on, please feel free to come forward. We got about four minutes left, three minutes left, so you may as well be quick.
Can I say this one?
Yes, you can.
You know, from our standpoint, and I think it's important for us and the commission to understand that we're trying to, we're trying to streamline this. We're trying to simplify the zoning process in Tuscaloosa. This can be changed. This can all be changed, even after it's adopted. It can be, it can be changed just through the process we're going through. Every third, what is it, every fourth Wednesday and, or every fourth Monday in the month, third, third Monday, whatever. So I mean, we're not, we're not like casting an iron dome over all of our zones. We, we, it can be, these can be modified through the zoning process. I understand, I understand Brock, I understand y'all's position, trying to streamline this, making property more, more advanta, advantageous for people to take, but again, it's not like we're going away. It's not like two years down the road, if we made a mistake, bring it to us and it makes sense, we'll, we'll make it work.
I appreciate your optimism. I appreciate your optimism.
But I, I think y'all take it as a personal front. I know that y'all do a lot, do a lot of trying to communicate with people, but I still think we can do it better. I mean, you know, for instance, if, if you're, if you're touching the property or within five hundred feet, is that right? I mean, during normal rezoning, I mean, so, but, but if you're not touching, so you can be three hundred feet away from somebody and not get a notice.
Who governs that? Is that a city-ish regulation or state?
That, so our notification regulations are a function of the city council. It's something that they have passed and what we do. I am ha, let's, you and I can chat offline about other options for getting more people involved, because I do agree with you. This is something that everybody, that everybody needs to be aware of, but I am also wholly cognizant that there are people who don't want to be aware of what's going on. And that there are people who very much should be aware of what is going on and they are involved or they, they're choosing not to be. And so I, let's you and I think of some ideas. I'm really quickly, oh, Mr. Wright, I know, we're, so, sorry, that's you.
Joan Barth, fifty-five, forty-one Woodbury Lane, President of Tuscaloosa Neighbors Together. We have sent letters to our council representatives and asked them to hold a meeting in their district to look at this map. And if they can do it and get the word out, I think that would be really helpful. I've only had a couple people respond and one said no. So this isn't, this is, you guys are all very receptive and it's a good format, but you can't review the map here like you can at a separate meeting or, or something like that. So anything that you can do to give feedback to the council, to the mayor, to say, you should have some district meetings pay, support for the rental of the building or whatever, so we can try to get people out to them. Thank you. I'm sorry, it's time to go.
So. Any last comments? We are at the seven o'clock hour, so.
We are at the seven o'clock. Just really quickly, since we are wrapping, just keeping an eye on the other special called meeting schedule. We will be in West Tuscaloosa at the end of February. That map will go online Monday next week, so you can start taking a look at it, examining it. Keeping in mind the things that we discussed this evening about changes to M R one, M R two, S F R four, multi-family. In March, we'll move into the downtown, eastern growth area in April, Alberta, the McFarland Corridor in May, June, Highway sixty-nine, South in Skyland, and then July, we start to wrap up this process. So as always, framework.tuscaloosa.com is your one-stop shop for all things framework. Please go look at the map, provide comment, reach out also to staff. Mr. Pons and I are always available, as are the rest of the planning staff, so we'd love to talk with folks. Mr. Wright?
Meeting adjourned.